The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
I would like to call the March 18, 2025 City Council Meeting to order at 6:30 A.M. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the number printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in person. Main Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed the public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comments period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be rebroadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 A.M. and alternate Tuesday at 8:00 P.M. and archived for viewing on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we're going to proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation Road Call, and Councilmember Stan Liu will lead us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, everyone. Please stand up, raise your hand over your heart, and place the flag, and ready, begin.
Now, please remain standing for the invocation by Deacon Dennis Shane, St. Dennis Catholic Church.
Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening with gratitude to serve our community. We pray that you bless every person and family who has made Diamond Bar their home or their place of business. We also, please also bless all the hard-working public servants, our leaders, city staff, and all those who dedicate their time and talents to maintaining and improving our city, to whom we are very grateful. And please bless everyone present here, especially our council members and mayor, as they exercise their elected public duties this evening on discerning and deciding on the matters of the agenda presented before them. Grant them the clarity of mind, patience in discussion, and the spirit of unity as they work together for the common good. May you be present with them to guide them in wisdom. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Deacon Shane. Please be seated. City Clerk Santana, can you please call the row?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
I'm here.
Councilmember Liu?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Tai?
Here.
Mayor Tang?
Here.
Thank you. City Attorney Sandoval, are there any reportable actions from the closed session today?
Mayor, there is no reportable action out of closed session this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda this evening.
The agenda is hereby approved. Now, we have a special presentation. Today, we have a Greater Los Angeles Vector Control District presentation. Assistant General Manager Steve Betron will be present to give a PowerPoint presentation.
So, we, as we are kind of standing on the doorstep of yet another mosquito season, we wanted to provide an overview of some of the services that our agency provides to the residents of Diamond Bar. So, to give you a little bit of information about us, we are the largest of five vector control districts within the County of Los Angeles. Our primary objective is mosquito control, but we also do surveillance and control of black flies, as well as non-biting midges throughout our district. We're funded through a property tax assessment for single-family homes and currently stands at $1,897 annually. So, our primary focus is mosquito-borne disease. This is of great concern to us. Currently, the biggest threat to public health is dengue. This past year, we responded to 140 travel-associated cases of dengue within our district. To put that into perspective, that's nearly one-quarter of the cases in the state of California last year. Last year marked the first time that we had a locally-acquired case within our district. We ended up the season with three of the 14 cases that were reported within L.A. County. So, this is definitely a big issue for us, and we anticipate that this season is going to be very similar. West Nile virus is a continual threat to the health of our residents, and this has been that way since its arrival in California in 2003. And although not as prevalent now, but St. Louis encephalomyelitis is making a comeback. And in the last few years, we've seen cases pop up from time to time. The way we address this threat to public health is through an integrated vector, excuse me, an integrated vector management approach, or an IVM approach. And there are three main pillars to an IVM program. These are scientific surveillance, utilizing various control methods, as well as educating the public on public health threats. When it comes to the control, this is really the responsibility of our largest department, our operations department. They perform a number of services, and they all vary in visibility to the public. Some of the services of highest visibility are service request responses. This is when residents reach out to us with a mosquito problem, we'll respond, conduct an inspection of their property, and do any necessary treatments. The other is in our mosquito-borne disease case response. This is primarily for 80s-borne diseases like dengue. This is when we respond to the case, and we go into the neighborhoods surrounding where this individual lives, and we'll conduct door-to-door inspections of properties and do any treatment, as well as provide informational materials. Of a little bit lesser visibility to the public are our vector control specialists who have individual routes, especially those that are treating public sources, such as this low-flow in a flood-control channel, as well as our swimming pool program. Our technicians identify unmaintained swimming pools through aerial photography, as well as satellite imagery, and they'll go out and make sure that those are not contributing to the mosquito populations in those areas. The other is gutters. If you blink, you miss these folks, but we have folks out there every day during the season treating gutters in, you know, any of these gutters that have low spots or are holding water and potentially breeding mosquitoes. Perhaps the least visible of all of them are our underground and our flood-control channel programs. Our underground storm drain teams, and these slides are in reverse order, my apologies for that, but our underground storm drain teams, how about this, they go out and we have a vast network of underground storm-water conveyance systems that crisscross our district, and they go out, pop the lids, make those inspections, and do any necessary treatments. The other is our flood-control teams. They're out there with specialized equipment. This Jeep has a plow on the front that can clear debris and vegetation and allow that water to flow so that it doesn't pond up and breed mosquitoes. The city of Diamond Bar has roughly a little more than 800 mosquito sources that are in our database. These are kind of a mix of residential and public sources. And last year, we provided a little under 1,400 inspections and treatments to those Our scientific technical team, these folks are responsible for all of our surveillance throughout the district. They do extensive trapping to gauge mosquito abundance. Those traps are then identified, and mosquitoes of medical importance are then pooled as samples and then sent off for testing. We also collect and test dead birds for things like west Nile. And then, we monitor portions of the L.A. River that run through our district for black fly and midge. Kind of looking towards the future, we're one of the first districts in the state to pilot and evaluate the sterile insect technique program. Our method is to sterilize male mosquitoes. Male mosquitoes do not have the ability to bite. We sterilize them with X-rays, and then we release them in the pilot area. Once out in the environment, they can mate with those wild females, and then any eggs that would be laid as a result of that mating would not be viable, so over time, we would have a reduction in that population. This is a novel chemical pesticide-free alternative, and it is, with mosquitoes especially, it is very ecologically friendly. What we, what we're looking at this as is our best step forward to help us in our fight against these invasive 80s mosquitoes. Lastly, we have our communications department. Our communications teams do an excellent job of making sure of raising awareness of our district, making sure that their residents are aware of our services, as well as any updates on public health. And they do this through direct outreach with the community through various events. We have youth programs. We conduct city and community presentations, such as this one, as well as getting our message out through traditional and social media platforms. Why I'm here tonight is to ask for you to partner with us, to raise awareness, not only of our agency, but the services that we provide, especially as we go into another mosquito season. We ask that you follow us on social media, and then share any of those updates with your followers through your city platforms. We also want to encourage you to encourage your residents to notify us, to reach out to us if they're experiencing a mosquito problem, and we could provide some assistance. And lastly, is the ask of putting us in touch with your Public Information Office to potentially see if there's a way that we can secure a spot on your website where we can provide information or a link, as well as maybe a spot on your newsletter. So, please take that into consideration. We thank you very much. That is all for me. I appreciate the time, and I thank you for your attention. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chow?
Quick question. Is it, thank you for the presentation.
Of course.
Is it within the scope of service to trap and kill mosquitoes as well, or you kind of monitor and try to identify potential disease sources?
We monitor primarily to gauge abundance in certain areas, and that will inform our control strategy. Trapping to kill is not very effective. We want to, the best way to control mosquitoes is to address it at the larval source, so addressing those standing water issues, whether it's through source reduction, removing that water, or through chemical control.
Perfect. Actually, at least the next question. So, I think you mentioned that your department performed 1,400 inspections last year just in Diamond Bar. Are those, you automatically send people out? Since it looks like you have a database of all the hotspots, do you just automatically send people out to perform inspections?
Yes. If those sources are not transient, if they're going to, if they're going to be problematic from year to year, whether it's a catch basin along a city street, or if it's a drain in a loading dock or something like that, that goes into our database, and our technicians will continue to visit that site to ensure that it doesn't breed mosquitoes.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Liu?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you for the presentation. I carry it, and one of the slides is dead bird testing for west Nile. Can you elaborate a little bit why that is the case?
Yeah, of course. So, with west Nile virus, just like St. Louis encephalitis and western equine, the disease cycle, birds are one of the natural reservoirs for that disease. So, those birds will contain the virus, they're infected by other mosquitoes, so that mosquito-bird cycle continues. And then, once virus kind of amplifies in those bird populations, and then that's when we, as humans, can be infected by those mosquitoes. So, it's one of our surveillance techniques to look at birds, to see if they test positive, and that'll give us an indication of if we have virus in circulation in that area.
The mosquito actually bite the bird?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, sorry, quickly. So, that actually brings up a question that I had. So, I actually found a dead bird at my house.
Yes.
A couple weeks ago. Not to gross you out, but the bird literally had no head, and was just sitting up in front of my porch. I opened the door, I about, you know, lost my lunch, you know? It's literally a dead bird without heads, just sitting on my porch. So, how do I get the bird to you guys to test?
So, we work in collaboration with the California Department of Public Health, and they have established a dead bird hotline, and that's 1-800-WNV, as in Victor, Bird. And... And so you can call that hotline, the screener will will speak to you and then gather the information, and then communicate that to us if that bird meets certain requirements. We'll go out, pick it up, and test it.
Oh, you'll come pick it up?
Yes.
Oh.
What'd you do with it?
Put it in a bag and disposed of it.
Was it organic?
Green waste.
Green waste.
Councilmember Liu?
Just thank you. Thank you for your presentation. That's really helpful. Can can a resident call the vector control district to ask for technicians to come out and and evaluate their property for mosquitoes and give hints and and sources of infestation, that kind of thing?
Absolutely. We we would welcome that early in the season, but oftentimes, we get, if we have a particularly bad mosquito year, if we start to have West Nile virus human cases and it makes the news, then the call volume jumps up. So at that point, we would have to make, we would have to screen that call and and get there when we could. But yes, that is absolutely possible.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Broten?
You have an interesting business. I see you sitting around at a, you know, a family gathering at the, having a picnic and saying, you remember, you remember that mosquito thing in oh eight? You remember that? A couple of things, you, I think it it showed at maybe the first or second slide, you're eighteen ninety-seven per homeowner.
That is correct.
Are you capped out?
No, we have current, our, when our assessment was set, that was set at twenty dollars fixed.
Okay.
We are not capped.
Okay, good. And then do we have the vector on our website?
We do have it, but we couldn't.
Great, because I I think that, like somebody that finds a dead bird on their porch, by the way, I think that was a neighbor, I don't think it was anything to do with, yeah. I mean, if if they don't have any place to go and ask questions, to to me, one of the biggest deals is pools that are ignored, and that's just a, how would they know who to who to?
In residential neighborhoods, that's that's one of our our largest contributors to the mosquito population, our unmaintained swimming pools.
And then with with Councilman Chow, if he didn't know, and he'd have called you, could we have called the Humane Society, or would they say, we don't touch that, call the vector?
They would probably advise you to put it in the garbage. If, I mean, if you were to call Health Department, they would, they would direct you to us directly. But again, this is something, you know, we we try to to promote some of these services as as best we can, and and again, that's why we're reaching out to the communities within our district and and asking for their assistance to perhaps reach a wider audience.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Well, I I am a primary care doctor, so I don't believe that in the last thirty years or so, I have seen any cases of dengue fever, West Nile virus, or SLE. And so I don't know how usually the the cases you you mentioned are usually presented to the emergency room or to the doctor's office in fever, headache, something like that?
Yes, dengue, unfortunately, dengue has an, only twenty percent of those individuals infected with dengue will present with symptoms. So but those other eighty percent can still infect mosquitoes, and that's what's of greatest concern to us. When oftentimes, people will wait, they think it's maybe just the flu, so we see this long period between when they, when symptom onset to when they seek medical care. And we work with, we receive all of our cases through the Los Angeles County Health Department, their acute communicable disease control section. And they, we have asked for those as quickly as possible, but the vast majority of those come back confirmed for for dengue. And what drives people to the doctor, I don't know, but it shares so many symptoms with so many other things that are not as severe.
Just like a regular flu, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Next is a city manager's report and recommendation. City Manager Fox, are there any reports?
There are no additional reports this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is public comments. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting's agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to direct directly address the city council on consent calendar items or other matters of interest, not on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five minutes maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers during the teleconference who may wish to speak on the public comments. I do not have any speaker card today, so City Clerk Santana, is there any persons online?
There are, and Mayor, just to confirm, there were no emails submitted for public comment tonight. There are some callers on the line, so if any member of the public joining this meeting would like to provide a comment, please click on the raised hand icon in the GoToWebinar program now. And there, oh, we got one hand, Mr. Paul Diebel. You can go ahead, Mr.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Ting and members of the city council. My name is Paul Diebel, longtime resident of Diamond Bar. And as an advocate for more affordable housing for our families in Diamond Bar, I was interested in the consent calendar items, number five point five and five point six, which are the twenty twenty-four Housing Element Progress Report and the twenty twenty-four General Plan Status Report, respectively. And in reviewing them, I I just had a few comments to, that I thought I would pass on. The first is to note how changing and liberalizing the rules on accessory dwelling units has had a a notable impact in providing some additional presumably affordable housing units in Diamond Bar, which I think is a very positive thing. However, it's only a pretty small dent in the city's overall housing needs assessment. And as noted in the staff report, it will take development of the town center specific plan and the other specific plan neighborhood area plans to really make a real progress in providing some more affordable housing options in Diamond Bar. So I was curious about what the city was doing to actively promote such development by developers. Although I did see in recent council meetings, some agenda items on, you know, the Development Code amendments that you've done to implement the specific plans. I think it was on February fourth, along with a a water supply assessment, and I also think there's an environmental impact review that is coming up in the near future, which I which I see as all encouraging signs. But I was curious about whether there are any active efforts more along the lines of economic development project or outreach to the development community or something like that to promote such development in the city, which I think we need very much. So I just wanted to thank you for these updates, and thank you for your work to provide more affordable housing options for multi-generational families like mine here in Diamond Bar. Thank you.
Thank you. City staff has any response?
At this point, as we get closer to the adoption of the Town Center specific plan, we'll certainly be working with those property owners to be able to see how we can inspire them to implement the the specific plan. If you remember, you know, this is going to be a market-driven plan, and it really is up to the individual property owners to propose developments. But his points are well taken, and certainly we will be looking at at doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
There are no other hands raised, Mayor.
Seeing none, we will now move on. Next is the schedule of future events and the consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of the upcoming events and then proceed with the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Planning Commission will be meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, starting at six thirty P.M. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. We will be holding a Meet Your Public Safety Providers event on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, from six to eight P.M. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. And the Parks and Recreation Commission will be meeting on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, starting at six thirty in the same place at City Hall. And our next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, April first, starting at six thirty P.M. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have approval of the March fourth regular meeting minutes, approval of the check register dated February nineteenth through March fourth, approval of the treasurer's statement for February, approval to file the annual Housing Element Progress Report with HCD and OPR, and approval of to file the annual General Plan Status Report with HCD and OPR, and approval of a purchase order with GOV connection to purchase six HP Network servers. And that concludes the consent calendar this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar items, please.
I'll second.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Ting?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next is public hearings, and there are no public hearings items on tonight's agenda. We'll move on to the city council consideration. Item seven point one, City Manager Fox, please provide the report.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Assistant City Manager Ryan McLean will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Ting and members of the city council. The item before you for presentation is the twenty twenty-four Public Safety Report. This is a document that we created probably in the last six to eight years. We do it on an annual basis with the intent of meeting the council's goal of an open, engaged, and responsive government. A lot of the material in this report you might find familiar. What we do, and we put this together, is provide a description of all of the activities that our public safety providers from Inland Valley Humane Society, the Los Angeles County Fire Department, and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department provide on behalf of the city. And so there is a lot of information in here. There's a lot of text, there's a lot of numbers, and for the sake of time, I'm going to try to complete a pretty broad overview of each section, and I will be available to answer any questions if there's something I missed in my presentation. I also want to provide a little bit of time to discuss some of the takeaways from the data that's contained in the report, and there'll be several slides at the end that focus on that. This document will be available for the public. It's in our agenda packet this evening, and it will be posted on our city website tomorrow after we have the opportunity to present it to the council. Okay, we'll start by talking about our partners at the Inland Valley Humane Society and SPCA. They've been the city's partner on the animal care and control side for many, many years, dating back to the city's early history. Essentially, what IVHS provides on behalf of the city is enforcement of the animal sections of our municipal code. They provide licensing, administration, adoptions of animals out to interested pet owners, and canvassing. This year is actually a canvassing year, and that means that IVHS has been out in the community knocking on doors, reminding pet owners of their responsibility to license their pets. That's a provision of the municipal code and a key part of how we pay for our contract. On an annual basis for this fiscal year, we have about five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in contract costs associated with this service. That is offset by about a hundred thousand dollars in revenue generated by licensing and other fee-related services. So that brings down our annual budgeted expense for this service to about four hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. In each of the sections, I'll cover some statistics for the year. In this case, we'll be looking at the animal care and control statistics for twenty twenty-four as compared to twenty twenty-three. You'll see as you go through, there's a bit of decline in the service calls year over year from seventeen hundred and seven down to fourteen eighty-eight. You'll also notice there's a decline in the the number of adoptions. When looking at past data trends, this seems to be something that is associated with post-pandemic trends. At the time of the pandemic, there were a lot of pet adoptions. That trend has slowed in the years since, when people are not at home for extended periods of time. You also see some good news there at the bottom, in which reported bites, cruelty investigations, and violations of the city's animal-related municipal codes have all declined year over Moving on to our fire and emergency medical services, which of course are provided by the Los Angeles County Fire Department. Just a bit of background about the fire department and the services they provide locally. We do have three stations known as one-nineteens, one-twenty's, and one-twenty-ones. We have about forty personnel that staff our fire stations. And Chief Robertson, who has been a key partner with us for many years, is the leader of those personnel of three stations here in Diamond Bar. When we work with the fire department, one of the benefits is that we're dealing with a very large organization that has a lot of resources and manpower, and we have access to that full complement of equipment locally. And if we need to supplement it in the case of a wildfire or a major incident, we have access to that as well. And that has been demonstrated in other situations in the past, where we've had even a small-spot brush fire brings the cavalry and the air support. And we've had major wildfires across multiple counties. We've seen the extent of what the fire department can bring to Diamond Bar. In addition to providing core fire response and emergency medical services, the fire department has a very robust outreach and education program. And I'm not going to talk about all of them that are included on this list or within the document, but there are some key highlights that I'd like to hit here. The first is the SOLAR program. That is a multi-jurisdictional group of representatives, usually command staff from Los Angeles County, Orange County, Riverside County, San Bernardino County. They get together on a quarterly basis to discuss wildfire response and how they can have a unified command in the instance of a wildfire in this area. Obviously, that's very important, given the landscape that we have surrounding us and the incidents that have happened earlier this year, those tragic situations in the Palisades and in the Eaton area. The SOLAR event that they have on a quarterly basis actually came out of the Freeway Complex Fire that occurred in two thousand and eight that impacted Diamond Bar. And so that's continued on for almost twenty years now, and they continue to work together to ensure that they're ready and they have a unified command if and when that's necessary. Two other programs that I will highlight are the Ready, Set, Go, and Fire Programs. These are educational materials provided to residents and business owners. We have these resources available at all of our public meetings that we hold, whether it's City Government Explained, whether it's our public safety meetings that we hold throughout the year, and on our website. And these documents are very important in that they provide detailed information about how you can be prepared to evacuate in the case of a wildfire, how you can prepare your family in the case of a residential fire. It's a great preparation document, how you can be ready. And obviously, with what we've seen in the last few months, this is something that we all have to have to start doing in in all of our households. And these two documents are available on our website and are very detailed and handy items to help prepare. Finally, the Brush Clearance Program. This is an is something that is This is something that is very important in our community, given the frontage to wildland open space. There is requirements depending on the location of your property and its proximity to open spaces in which brush clearance is required to provide the defensible space necessary to protect property and lives. And so the fire department and various departments within the county will be out working with homeowners to ensure that the brush clearance requirements are met, and they'll be conducting inspections. I believe in the last year, they conducted over 3,000 inspections here in town. And so that's a really important ongoing program related to safety and preparedness that our fire department is responsible for and carries out. Providing a little bit of information about annual statistics, again, we're comparing this past year, 2024, calendar year to 2023. Look at the numbers, shows a slight increase in fire incidents. Most of the fire incidents that we experience in Diamond Bar are residential in nature. There may be a stove that was left on, electrical fire. Fire department responds to those. We had a slight uptick there. You'll see that the largest single statistical category is the rescue and emergency medical services calls, almost exactly the same amount as the previous year, over 2,600 emergency medical calls. One other note that's important, just for context, you'll see that there's a pretty significant decline in special incident and an increase in good intent. And that is due to a change in the way that the department is calculating their statistics. And so some of those items that were included in special incident are now under the good intent call category. So just a little bit of context, if you're interested in why there's a pretty significant change in those two categories. Moving on to law enforcement. As you know, the city has a contract model with the county of Los Angeles to provide law enforcement under the Contract Services Model. We have about a $7.3 million base personnel cost. So that's the cost just of the positions that we contract for on an annual basis. We pay a 12.5% surcharge on each of those positions known as the Liability Trust Fund. That amounts to a little over $911,000. So our total contract cost for the year is a little over 8.2 million. This is funded out of the general fund. It is the single largest expense in our annual budget. And it demonstrates the priority of public safety. People say that your budgetary decisions reflect priorities. And this is a good example of that. We have 17 personnel that we contract for on an annual basis. 16 of those are deputies or sworn positions, and we have one non-sworn community services officer that assists with report writing and the parking citation program. Our law enforcement team is led by Captain Towsey. He's our chief of police, if you will. Lieutenant Dale is our service area lieutenant. And we work with both of them on a regular basis to ensure that our public safety needs are met from the law enforcement side. Just a little bit of additional information. We contract for 17 personnel. But included in the cost of those positions are all of the supplemental personnel that are necessary to run a police department. In this case, this is the command staff, captains, lieutenants, detectives, administrative staff, vehicles, equipment, the station itself. These are all significant costs that would be, would require much more annual budgetary resources to provide in-house. We also have access, much like the fire department's, additional resources. We have access to those in the sheriff's department. And so special units like Major Crimes, Narcotics, the Arrow Bureau, we have access to those as well, given, based on need. We do have an active volunteer on patrol program. We have about 21 Diamond Bar volunteers that have offered over 5,000 hours of service in the last year. And I'll talk about this in a little bit, but we're going to make a push to increase volunteer participation, or at least encourage people through a sort of membership drive to come out and be a part of that volunteer program. We'd like to see more than the 21 that we have and supplement those that have given so much of their own personal time over the past year. City council has also deployed the FLOC safety system. 2024 was the first full year in which that system was online. That comes at a cost of roughly $165,000 a year, and that pays for 50 cameras throughout the city. Those are automated license plate readers. So what they do is they take pictures of vehicles license plates, and those can be used as an investigative tool to supplement the, to supplement witness testimony and any other evidence that has been collected following a criminal incident. And then finally, we have the Report for Reward program. This is something that's been around for about a decade, and this is a way to encourage residents, if they see something, to say something. If a tip from a resident results in the arrest of someone that is suspected of committing a property crime, they're eligible for a $500 reward. So let's get into the numbers for 2024. When we look at our Part 1 crime summary, and again, Part 1 crimes are uniform crime categories that are reported by all police jurisdictions to the Federal Bureau of Investigation. And they include major incidents in each of three, of two categories, which is violent crime and property crime. And we'll look at those individually on some subsequent slides. When comparing 2024 to 2023, you'll see a 7.3 reduction in overall Part 1 crime, a 42.6% reduction in overall total violent crime, and property crime was down about 5%. So all three of the categories resulted in improvement. Violent crime in particular, the 39 total violent crimes, was the lowest total we have had in the city's history. Now, when looking at property crime, we can see that there's a reduction in total property crime. But one of the things that we'll talk about in more detail is there is a spike in residential burglaries. And there is, there's been a great deal of work done to begin curbing that spike, and we'll get into that detail as we move along. So in addition to comparing year over year, we like to look at our historic averages and medians. This gives us a little bit greater context into the numbers. Sometimes year over year, particularly in a pretty low-crime community, small changes in the totals can have big percentage impacts. And so we look at the historical averages and the historic medians just to make sure that we're getting the most out of our data. We also look at five-year averages. So we take a window of the last five years to break it down even further. For 2024, overall Part 1 crime totals and violent crime totals came in below our historic average and medians. Property crime came in below our historic averages and slightly above the median. When we look at a five-year window, total Part 1 crime was slightly above average, but remained at the median, while violent crime was well below both. Property crime was above the average, but at the median. Now we'll get into a little bit more detail related to each of the categories within violent crime and property crime. So as I mentioned before, we had an all-time low total of 39 incidents. We had double-digit significant reductions in each of the categories. Now, you will notice that we don't have a lot of these incidents in any year. But this year in particular was pretty remarkable when you look at it from the reductions across the board. Homicide, down 50%, rape, down 37.5%, robbery, down 47.6%, and aggravated assault, down 40.5%. It's also important to note that we work with our leadership at the station to get an understanding of the types of incidents that are happening in each of these categories. It's important to note that in working with the captain and lieutenant, the vast majority of assaults, for example, are domestic in nature. And so it's not as if it's a random occurrence or something happening out in public. Most of those are happening on the domestic side. And that is not to, you know, reduce the impact that that may have, but just to provide a little bit of context. Looking at property crime, this is the top priority. When you look at the numbers, 96% of the crimes that were reported in 2024 are property crimes. So this is the vast, vast, vast majority of crime that we experience here in Diamond Bar. You'll see, the good news is, we're down 5%. However, burglary totals were up 19.5%. And that is driven by a very significant spike in residential burglaries. You'll see on the screen there that we experienced a 60% increase in residential burglaries. On the other hand, there was a 16.5% reduction in commercial burglaries. Now, you may recall that last year, when this item was presented to the city council, we had just experienced a very significant spike in commercial burglaries. We worked with our sheriff's team, with our community relations deputy, and got out and hit the streets on the commercial side, and were able to impact that in a positive way this year. We saw significant reductions in larceny, over 12% in larceny thefts, over 21% from vehicle. You may recall from previous presentations that we experienced quite a few of vehicle thefts, and that impacts our overall crime stats for an annual basis. We got the word out in our public meetings in some of the items that our community relations team put together on our website and on social media. And we saw some positive change there. We also saw a very significant drop in auto theft. The arson percentage change is a good example of how numbers can be deceiving, 100% increase where it went from one to two incidents during the year. We are going to focus on that residential burglary issue and what steps have been taken to address it once I get through the next slide, which is related to traffic statistics. The good news here is a, about a 9.5% drop in traffic accident incidents. You'll see that we have some reductions across the board as it relates to citation issuance. We break those down between hazardous, which are moving violations, and non-hazardous, which are not. We did see an increase in our parking citations, and that is associated with some changes that were made to the schedule of our community services officer that is responsible for patrolling behind our trash trucks. Much like our partners at IVHS and the Los Angeles County Fire Department, we have expectations that our public safety providers are going to provide solid outreach and engagement. And we partner with them to create them. I can't say enough about our community relations team. They do an awesome job, top-notch stuff that I think our, our teams would agree with. Many of the things that we've put in place over the last few years related to law enforcement outreach and engagement include the very popular Coffee with a Cop program, neighborhood and business watch events that we actively seek additional participation for. We have a ton of information on our website. We have social media posts. We have videos, all kinds of resources that are available with the click of a mouse on our website. During our movie and concert in the park series, we have Diamond Bar Night Out, which is another opportunity for residents to interface with members of our law enforcement team. Our public safety seminars, this was mentioned in the schedule of future events, to come out and meet your public safety members. This starts next Wednesday. It'll be held at City Hall at 6:00 PM in the Windmill Room right downstairs. We'll have representatives from the city. I'll be there. Our sheriff's department, fire department, and the Humane Society will provide some information about the programs that are provided. And then there'll be an opportunity to ask questions. We'll stick around even afterwards if people would rather speak one-on-one or have concerns about any issues that are happening in the community. We'll have the right people there to assist. We also talk about public safety at our City Government Explained series. And our Crime Stats database is available on the city website. That goes all the way back to the year 2000. So you can do all of the fun data analysis and analytics that you'd like to do using that information. We try to make this information available, not only in this report, but on an ongoing monthly basis. We update those statistics. So anyone who is interested can dig into them and, and analyze any of the trends that are happening in town. So there's a lot of good news here as it relates to law enforcement. Total Part 1 crimes down over 7%. Lowest Part 1 violent crime totals in the city's history. Property crime in total, down about 5%. Commercial burglaries, down 16.5% year over year. Larceny theft, down over 12. And auto theft, down 29.5%. But we don't rest on our laurels and just on the good news. There is a challenge to deal with, and that is the residential burglaries. And this is a very, very important issue. It's a trend that demands attention and has received attention on an ongoing basis. A little bit about the trends that we see, and I'm reporting this after consulting on a regular basis with our command staff at the station. Most of the events tend to occur afternoon, early evening. These occur when no one is home. A lot of them follow the knock-knock template that we've discussed at these presentations in the past, in which you have somebody waiting in a car. A member of the crew or two will go out and make an attempt to see if anyone's home. If they determine that no one's home, they'll try to go around back, shatter a window, climb a ladder, go upstairs, any way to get into the residence. A lot of these crews are organized, and they come from different sections of the region, whether it be east or west. And they target, in general, not every time, but we see a pattern that they're targeting cash, jewelry, and handbags and purses that have high value. So knowing that we have this challenge and knowing that a residential burglary is one that really violates somebody's personal security and that of their family, the response is very important. And so one of the first things that we look at doing is using the council-appropriated Law Enforcement Reserve Fund. This is an account that has been included in our annual budget on an ongoing basis for at least a decade, probably before that. And these funds allow for the staff to work with our leaders at the station to supplement the patrol deputies and our special assignment team deputies with additional units or overtime that allows us to address burglary issues. So it gives us more boots on the ground out in the field. We use this fund to conduct additional suppression patrols for December and January, up until the resources were moved to deal with the fires. And so we had a good five, six weeks that we were allowed to fund and get those extra eyes and ears and boots on the ground to try to reduce the burglary issues that we've been having. A lot of the time, cases that occur in Diamond Bar, a burglary case, will be referred to the Sheriff's Department's Major Crimes Bureau. Major Crimes is conducting very detailed, extensive, and complicated cases. And often, what they will do is they will track someone who has committed a burglary to put together a case that can bring down the crews that are responsible for these cases, not only in Diamond Bar, but throughout the region. that are responsible for these cases, not only in Diamond Bar but throughout the region. And so these are multi-jurisdictional, they're very complex, they can be very expensive, they can be using all kinds of different technological pieces, whether it's a tracker, whether they're doing cellphone work. These are ways to try to reduce the regional impact that we are currently the victim of. I already mentioned the Flock Safety Cameras that are here and our attempts to begin pushing more membership in our Volunteers on Patrol and for those retired law enforcement residents that we have living here to join, potentially join the Reserve Deputy Program. And this is important not just because, you know, it's a good thing to do and it's being part of the community, it's because it gives us, much like the suppression patrols, additional eyes and ears out in the community. And given with the rapid way that these burglaries have been taking place, sometimes suspects are in and out of the house within five minutes. We gotta have the additional eyes and ears out there and if we can leverage the support of residents that are interested in being a part of the solution and assisting their community, we'd love to get them to be a member of either the Volunteers or the Reserve Deputy Program. And you'll see more advertising for that in the next month or so and in print, online, and at our meetings that we'll be conducting with the public. So those items are pretty standard responses. The responses you'll see here are more significant. First is the redeployment of our special assignment team. So we have a group of patrol deputies that we contract for on an annual basis. We also have five members of the special assignment team that are deputies that are our utility players that we can plug and play to deal with any number of issues. In this case, our leadership at the station has changed their shift hours to be in line with the timeframe that we're seeing these incidents take place. And that's going to stay in place for a pretty extended period in an attempt to get more visibility and response out in the community related to burglary suppression. The captain has also deployed station detectives to radio cars. So we have nine personnel, give or take, eight or nine, that are detectives that are working cases. They're going to be out in radio cars throughout the week to provide additional support in the field. This does come at a cost of delays to investigations, but in the opinion of the captain and under his command, he's determined the reduction of burglaries to be the top priority and is using the resources that we have available to maximize that response. And then finally, the captain has worked with, worked up the chain of command at the sheriff's department to receive some assistance from the COPS Bureau. This is the Community Oriented Policing Bureau of the Sheriff's Department. What they do is they temporarily will deploy to communities throughout the service area. It's intermittent, it's not a permanent thing. We may have them for a week here, a week there, but when we do, we have up to 13 deputies and two sergeants that can be deployed specifically to target issues unique to the community that they are assisting at that time. Of course, in this case, that has to do with burglary suppression. So in summary, we've covered a lot of the numbers for all three of our public safety providers. There's good news there, of course, but in response to the residential burglary situation, it's all hands on deck. So that is, I've explained the different personnel that the sheriff's department is using. City staff is working directly with our sheriff's department to assist everything from, you know, the city manager's office and the community relations team, whatever we need to get the word out. Public partnerships are key as well. We encourage residents to continue their efforts to enhance home and personal security. Join a neighborhood watch. The See Something, Say Something mantra is important. Call in if you see a car that seems to be casing your neighborhood. And attend our public safety meetings. We have had a number of, a whole series of public safety meetings that we do in the public that are interactive and we hold them throughout the community. We've done them for several years and again, I mentioned the one that's going to be held next week. Please come out to that if you have any questions. Call me directly if you have any questions related to the program. I'd be happy to discuss it. We want you to be engaged and be able to speak with you and help you. And then finally, again, join the Volunteers on Patrol, the LASD reserves if you have the time and ability to do so. You can make a real difference. So again, despite the challenge of residential burglaries, there are some encouraging signs. We saw declines across the categories. Double digits in violent crimes and commercial burglaries and larceny theft, which make up a huge portion of the annual crime totals, go down year-over-year. And so with that, I will return this matter to the city council and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. At this time, are there any public comments on this item?
Mayor, there were no emails for this item and there are still people on the line. So if anyone would like to provide a public comment on item 7.1, please click on the raised hand icon in the Go To Avira program now.
Are there any council members' comments or discussion? We'll start with the council member Chow.
I have a question about the reserves, the deputy reserve program. I'm fairly familiar with the Volunteer on Patrol, but can the captain or somebody speak a little bit more about the reserves program? How does one qualify? What is the time commitment and all that? Thank you.
You hear me now? Okay, perfect. So the reserve program has different levels of designation. So the lowest is a reserve level three. That would be somebody who would go to the academy. I want to say it's like 80 hours. They are able to wear a uniform, not have a gun, and go out on patrol. You have a level two reserve who is more training, who would be able to carry a weapon and then be with a certified peace officer to kind of shadow them. And you have, we have a level one designated, which was the ones we would target, like a reserve would be retired law enforcement. They could go out and act like a peace officer, normal peace officer, all full powers of arrest. They get paid $1 a year and they're obligated to give one shift a month. And that's above their reserve meeting. So they meet once a month at the station and then they're obligated to go, what we call TNA, go in service for one shift a month and that would fulfill their obligation to be a reserve. But the reserves we do have at the station tend to put in way more hours in one shift a month. The problem is to find someone who's put in 30-plus years in law enforcement, to be quite frank with you, and have them come out for free. So that's a challenge that we have, but we do have a lot of folks who are bankers or postal carriers or own their own business that want to become reserves and I think that's an important citizenship that's kind of targeted so they can come out and give back. Especially those who are interested in law enforcement but never were able to take that career path because they do own a business or, you know, they're raising their family or whatnot. Because this job, as we all know, working shift work is tough on a family. Any other questions? Reserve program?
I have a question. How many reserves do we have now?
You know, ma'am, I don't know the exact number. If I had to guess, I think it's somewhere around 12. But I'd have to talk to our discussion training sergeant who would have those exact numbers, but it's somewhere around that ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
A good example of a reserve helping Diamond Bar in this case is in the transition between our community relations deputy. We were able to bring Mark Saint Amant in to help smooth that transition and he is, as you know, a former deputy at the station who's now serving as a reserve.
Great. Maybe we have to contact all these people as a condition of their retirement. They have to come back as a reserve, otherwise they can't retire.
Another question, Councilmember Liu, any question?
I have two questions. This is on the animal cruelty. There seemed to be a huge increase. And then also in the special incidents on the fire department, that's a huge decrease. Elaborate what those things are and why contribute to the increase in cruelty?
I don't have specifics on each of those cases. I don't think there's a specific, in this case, trend related to that. It's a kind of case-by-case basis. So these are the amount of reports that they took related to cruelty and they're all going to vary based on the case. And so unlike, you know, the burglary incidents that we've received where there is a trend and there are crews that are associated with it, these are very individual and so it's hard for me to say that there's one specific cause associated with that. It would be a case-by-case type basis. As for the fire department and the change in what I believe were called...
Special incident.
Special incidents. That was the result of a change in the way that they file their statistics. And so a lot of those special incidents went under the umbrella of good intent call.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, present.
I have a question, see if there's none other. Okay, thank you. Great report, Assistant Management, clean, thank you for that. I have a question regarding, and thank you for addressing the burglaries because as you know, I think all of us on city council here who are sitting up here are just very, very concerned about that. What concerns me is, and I didn't think that you addressed it, was or is the statistic regarding response times. I believe the response times are greater this year than last year and also greater than a five-year average. What do you attribute that to?
Yes, there is a slight increase in the response times. It's probably best that a member of our station leadership discussed that. I know that there are some incidents, and this doesn't apply to all of them, but I know that there was one in the last year in which a clock kept running well beyond the time that it was complete and that had an impact. But I'd ask that our captain or lieutenant kind of discuss the impacts or the factors that impact response times on an ongoing basis.
Again, so I think last year what we saw was the construction project for the freeways, dumping a lot of freeway traffic onto the surface streets. And then so a lot of, most, majority of our calls are during our PM hours, which are 2:00 to 10, or 3:00 to 11. So you get more traffic on your surface streets, more construction happening on your surface streets. And so then deputy sheriffs will inherently take a little longer, get to a call for service, but we're talking fractions, right? So I think if I remember, my memory serves me right, emergency calls went from, I want to say, 4.5 to 4.9. So that's .4 of a minute. So we're talking 20 seconds. So yeah, there might be a little extended, but we also got to keep in mind that deputies have to drive with due caution, even though they might be code three, right, with lights and sirens. But I think they're still getting to their calls in a reasonable amount of time. I can tell you as the station leadership, the captain and I, we don't have an issue with the response times. We think they're pretty reasonable, given the amount of traffic that does flow through Diamond Bar and we all seen it when we were trying to get just down the street, how long it can take. So I think that's what we contributed to.
Okay, great, thank you. Then I have another question regarding the responses and that was, I was so encouraged to hear redeployment of special assignment team and detectives to radio cars and deployment of LASD, Community Oriented Policing. And I think that's really positive, it's really encouraging. Can you tell me when this started and do we have any early stats of how that's the impact of these strategies?
So the detectives and the SEO teams were basically deployed about the same time. We started like the end of February, beginning of March. We've been in contact with our Detective Bureau supervision, who also oversees the SEO teams. So right now, we have a plan in place for March, April, and into May. And what we're doing is we're having the deputies print out their logs every single day, give them their logs to the Detective Bureau leadership. They're ensuring that it's more target focused because as our reporting gets done, so kind of give you a little short synopsis of how it works. You know, your crime gets reported, report gets written, report gets approved, gets processed by the secretaries, gets entered into our system called LARCSIS. Then we can see the crime stats. Well, that takes time. So we're having the deputies who are reporting the crimes happening to our supervisors and comparing the logs to the SEO teams to ensure it's more targeted and forced, right? So that's kind of what we're doing. We don't have the numbers as of right now, how much the burglies have gone down, but I can tell you, we listen to the radio all single day. The calls for service for that are going down.
Oh, that's fantastic.
So it sounds great, but we won't know until we see it on paper. That's going to take us some time, though.
That's fantastic. Last year, we did a big push for the catalytic converter thefts. What's the stats on that?
I don't have the stats on that, ma'am, but I can tell you, we've suspended the etching program to redirect our SEO teams to these residential burgs because we want to get these things under control as obvious as everybody does. So I know catalytic converter thefts aren't as great, but that's kind of the ebb and flow of a market, too. There was a market for that and the state was pushing to some of these people who are recycling that metal that they couldn't take it. So the state was doing a lot at that end. We were doing the etching program. So those crimes have gone down, but I think it's a multifaceted thing. I don't think it's just one thing with that.
Great, and it sounds like you're pushing out a lot of information to our residents as to how to protect themselves and what to do in the case of a burglary, residential burglary.
So I know Debbie Ferris guys are, were watching meetings and we've talked about, you know, how not to become a victim. And one of the things we talked about recently is, you know, the deputies have the body cams now and I had to do an odd, random audit and I was watching this body cam where they were clearing this backyard and there was like three ladders stacked up against the house. And we know that some folks don't put alarms on their windows upstairs and you give the criminal an easy access to upstairs. So those are the kind of things we're trying to teach the public, like store your equipment, store your ladders, don't give them tools to get into your home, make it look like someone's home if they're not, timers on lights, those types of things to try not to be advertised so much as try to become a victim.
That's great, thank you so much.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Mayor, present.
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor and I got to hear all this, don't go lieutenant, got to hear all of the stats that we saw tonight or heard tonight. You made an interesting statement about response time. And it has to do with when somebody calls, you're going through the drill, is everything okay? Is anybody, and that will affect the response time, correct? So you're not racing to my house if somebody's broken in and I'm hiding in the closet. You're making a decision that there's no hurry here. We'll get there when we can get there, correct? Or does that not count on your account?
Not necessarily. So as a call comes in, the call taker's taking the call and typing the call. If they do a call, they're putting out what we call preliminary information and they send the call to the deputies and the deputies go in route to the call, yes, the clock is ticking on their response time. If the call has been completely typed in, we have all the information from the caller and the call sent to the deputies and the deputies go in route to the call, that starts the clock. So it depends on the circumstances. That could delay depending on the call is put out to the deputy. So a situation like that is like, hey, someone's in my house, I hear something, here's my address. They type the call in, hey, further follow, so I head in this way. And then as the information comes in, they update the call. So it would be dependent on the call type, but yes, it could.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's the big dog.
One thing to point out on that also, it goes the other way as well. Let's say the call is, I'm fighting with my husband. He's not being physical, nothing's happening. So we type the call in and it goes in as a priority call. Then five, six minutes later, they call back screaming into the phone and saying that it's gotten worse now and we need to go there, emergent. Well, the six minutes has already ticked by on that call. As soon as it gets updated to emergent, it becomes an emergency call and then that, those times are going to count against it, if that makes sense.
Right, that was sort of my question.
Right, because it got upgraded to emergency after it was already a priority.
You know, start the clock over.
It, no, it would, all those minutes would go towards the emergency category. So we want to see the crimes stay down, obviously, I mean, the times, but there's definitely 20, 20 seconds year-over-year is right within range because of things like that, as well as what Daniel said with the traffic.
Yeah, especially with traffic. Thank you.
Don't go, don't go, I have a question.
Thank you.
So are you able to share how you decide the patrol route? Is that the information that you can make it available or you won't let the bad guys know about it? Because I heard people complain that, hey, my area, my streets were never patrolled by any sheriff. So are you able to share that information?
That's a tough one to quantify because are you the kind of person, Mrs. Kravis, where you're looking at your window 24/7 and never see a police car go by? That would be my argument to that. No, we encourage the deputies, if it's what we call a non-priority call, let's say your car got broken in overnight and you have no idea when it happened and they need a report. You know, we're asking the deputies to kind of snake through the city, take the long route to that. Might take an extra two or three minutes, but they might hit an extra couple of streets they wouldn't have done before. But a lot of times, you know, during PM hours, I'm going to go back to that, deputies are off the main thoroughfares because you just can't traverse the city quickly enough on the main thoroughfare. So they're off the streets and they're going through the neighborhoods. But to try to quantify when they're going to be on your street on a particular day at a particular time, I can't give you that because, you know, any individual deputy is going to look at the map and go, okay, the traffic's stacked up here, I need to get to this call. And I'm over here on this side of town, over by Sunset Crossings, and now I got to get all the way over to the other side of town. So how am I going to do that? So the deputies just kind of make the decision on the fly as they're driving around.
So it's not a set predetermined route that you drive, right?
No, sir. I mean, when the emergency call, we're going to take the shortest distance, of course, that we can get there. But no, there's no predetermined route that a deputy will take to any individual call because the call could be at one location and they happen to be at another location another time.
Okay, so second question is the $1 per year only for the reserve one, right? Doesn't apply to reserve two or three? Is that correct?
No, it's $1 per year for every reserve. And why exactly the county pays them $1 per year, I actually do not know. That's an interesting one I need to find out, but I know that they all laugh about it because I think they get about 86 cents after taxes.
Thank you. Is there any additional comments, Councilmember Chow?
One more question. It's more of a clarification on the number personnel. So I'm glad to hear that the station's doing all these things to help address residential burglaries. So I know we contract for 17 and it looks like you're doing suppression control, patrol with additional eight personnel, detective now on radio cars and you're deploying the COPS Bureau, which adds additional 13 deputies and two sergeants. So would it be fair to say that's in addition to the 17 we currently have? So we're talking about 17 plus eight plus 13 plus two?
So the detectives are non-line items, right? So they're not patrol deputies. They have the ability to be a patrol deputy, but we put them in a uniform, we send them out. They normally would not be out. And the cops team is in addition to, so they're all in addition to what you normally have. So you're still going to have your minimum staff and the deputies are going to your calls for service when people call in. And in addition to that, you're going to have SEO team members adjusted and in radio cars because sometimes we team them up, but now we split them up to get more cars on the street. Also, the COPS Bureau teams, they're out there and then our detectives are also out there.
That's great.
So it's probably going to be the most deputies you'll see driving around in a period of time in Diamond Bar. So it's, it's uh, it's probably going to be the most deputies you'll see driving around in a period of time in Diamond Bar in a very long time.
And you're expecting this to go until May, somebody said?
We're going to reevaluate to see how long we're going to keep this going, but I'll be quite frank with you. And I've had some candid conversations with our personnel. This thing needs to go through the summer. It's going to go through the summer. We're going to get a hold of this thing. We're going to take care of it.
Well, for it. Great, thank you.
It's probably worth clarifying, lieutenant, just the intermittent nature of the cops bureau and that we're not always going to have the thirteen plus two in addition. We have the ability to control the deployment of detectives, the special assignment team. But that cops bureau may be coming and going depending on needs throughout the county and how the brass in the sheriff's department decides to deploy them. The captain has indicated that he's going to continue working with them to make sure that they know what a priority it is here so that we can get them back as needed.
And great. And you know, honestly, with, with summer coming up, people go on vacation, we'll have a lot more empty houses in Diamond Bar. So if, if this can continue well into the summer months, that'll be great.
Yeah, the numbers will drive it, or will drive our, how we conduct our business. But we will, we'll look at it and we'll make sure we get this thing under control, because it needs to be taken. Something needs to happen.
Great. You guys are awesome. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Any additional comment? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive the, the presentation.
Annual, annual public safety report.
Presentation of the twenty twenty-four public safety annual report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion and second. Uh, city clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Liu?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Ting?
Yes. Motion carries. That will bring us the council subcommittee reports and the commands. I'm going to start with the councilmember Chow first.
Oh, thank you, mayor. And again, I want to thank our, our public safety partners for your report tonight. I think I will feel a little bit better knowing that a lot of things are happening behind the scene that residents may or may not know. And, but we'll make sure that we encourage them to come out, attend all the events that we have planned. Coffee with the cop is great. I, I've been to a few and you're doing wonderful with the community. I, I know you always joke that there's big shoes to fill, but I think you're doing a great job. And, and community seems to really accept you and I love you, so, so continue to do what you do. I don't have a lot, I don't have a meeting report, but the three councilmembers, we did go on a delegation trip to Taiwan last week. Self-funded, no taxpayer money was used in the trip. We had an opportunity to meet with the vice president of Taiwan, as well as a lot of mayors and councilmembers of major cities up and down Taiwan. And we learned a lot. I'm sure you would talk a little bit about the trip. But personally, I was really impressed by, by Taiwan's infrastructure, public transportation, their education system. They have ambitious goal of uh, by, by year twenty thirty to turn the, the country into completely bilingual. To both, you know, prepare the residents to compete kind of on an international stage and also just to be more competitive in the world economy. So yeah, so that was a fabulous trip. We're all back, still a little jet lagged, but I think we're doing okay with that. I'll say good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Lo?
Thank you, mayor. And again, I also want to thank our staff and the public safety partners for the great report. Particularly your addressing the um, the burglary issue and of course of our fire and our animals are equally important to us. I just want to take a moment to, to mention, actually to kind of piggyback on our public ser, uh, public safety report. And, and this is particularly directed to my colleagues here on, on the dais. I am not sure if you're aware, um, on March fifteenth, there was a, a story on ABC News. That was a story about the staffing crisis at the sheriff's department. And Sheriff Luna was, was interviewed as part of this story. And it's my understanding that, that he is calling the situation of deputies in his department. Into a crisis mode because there are currently approximately fifteen hundred deputy positions that are vacant. They're not filled. So, so these are deputies that, these are law enforcement officers that we need, that they are not there. And, and this number does not even include the deputies that are normally um, not, they're normally absent. Because of, they're on holiday, because they're sick, they're on vacation. And so now we are looking at a really shortage of deputies. And um, so that's, you know, and, and that's why I was really concerned about the response time. Is that if we have a shortage of deputies, then of course, not just our city, our city, to be fair, the response times are, are very small. But you know, from an overall county standpoint, it's, it's, you multiply that, it's, small numbers add up to quite a bit. And, and then on top of that, if you have fewer deputies, then um, you know, the deputies that you do have will suffer from burnout. And the way that they are filling the, the, the need is by giving overtime. And, and we heard a lot about overtime in terms of of the fire guys during the fires. They didn't have enough fired, fire officers, so they had to, you know, have, have fired, firemen work overtime, which leads to exhaustion and burnout. Particularly in the case of a law enforcement officer, because their job is so important and so stressful. And they have to think so quickly. Just think, if you're burnt out or if you're doing a double shift, boy, when you make a mistake, lives are on the line. So that's, that's a real concern of mine. And I believe our assistant manager even mentioned earlier in his comments about cops. And we think that cops here are a great idea, but as he mentioned, that depends on the resources of the entire county. So if we're looking at an entire county where the resources and personnel are depleted, then while we have cops here who can help us with our needs. Today or maybe next week, we really cannot depending, depend on them on a long-term or consistent basis. So um, so my request is for us to um, consider this, this crisis that actually, those are not my words, those are Sheriff Luna's words. Consider this crisis in, in, in staffing. I would like us to consider sending a letter to the board of supervisors advocating that they open up the purse strings. They open up the purse strings to not only hire, but to have academy classes. So that the sheriff can um, speedily and effectively and forcefully increase their recruitment. To bring his department back up to staff. Public safety is job one. Everyone in our, in our community and as our county deserves to feel safe. And that's, so I bring that to our consideration, that if, if you all agree, then we can direct our staff to prepare such a letter to the board of supervisors. Indicating our support for the needs of the sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Liu?
Thank you, mayor. I did know what councilmember Lo said.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Also, the sheriff, law enforcement. As I piggyback on what councilmember Chow said, we had the opportunity to, to um, to travel to Taiwan on our own dime. And one of the things that um, memorable moment was that this education exchange. It so happens that um, some, a, a group of high school students that came, uh, came for exchange. A program to Diamond Bar High School. And I would, we were able to, um, we know what, we saw the students here, my, my daughter in particular. And then saw how they were assimilated into uh, the different, um, different types of activities at our, our local high schools. And I had the opportunity to talk, to ask them, the teachers on that side and how their kids felt about it. And it's to learn that it was a wonderful um, program in terms of education exchange for the kids. On top of the academics, they get to learn um, from students here, peers here, that what um. What the different activities are and, and build friendships that way. And it's good that kids start to build understanding of each other, even though they're across the ocean. So that's well, and, and also a reminder, meet your public safety service provider is this next week, on March twenty-sixth, from six to eight A P M. So that's a reminder. Hope to see everyone there. And with that, I say good night. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, mayor. I, I just want to go back to what councilwoman Lo said. Do we have consensus on that? We all agree that we should send that letter? Okay, great. Did, did we need to send that?
The item is not agendaised, but we can put it on the agenda for your next meeting and that way we can have full discussion and you can actually take a motion.
Super. So I don't need to ask if it should be under the mayor's signature, all five of us? That would be better?
That is better to be agendaised, so we have five of you can sign it.
So you'll put it on the agenda. Very good. I, I, your presentation was so comprehensive, it's like, there's got to be something we can figure out here, something you missed. And it, it's all captured and you did a terrific job on it. And I, I know that Steph does a great job to help you do that as well. But to have the humane society and the fire captain and, and the sheriff there with us to answer those questions and, and to think about things, it's just outstanding. And I, I, I just don't think that you can say often enough, if you see something, say something. I think that really helps. The most important thing, though, is to be engaged. You know, we keep, we, on social media, they have no problem saying it's this, the council's fault. Occasionally, we get a few people here, but I think it's really important that they, they participate in, in these opportunities. And Ryan, you said four of them this year? There'll be quarter.
I believe we have March, April, and then September, October, if I remember correctly.
And then will the time move? Will the location move or?
This year, the location, I believe, is going to be held at City Hall each time. In the past, we have done it in different locations throughout town. So there have been opportunities over the past three, four, or five years to participate locally and then centrally here at City Hall.
Great. So I, I just would remind anybody that's listening at home to take advantage of it. It's one week from tomorrow on March twenty-sixth from six to eight P M. Thanks very much. Good night and God bless you.
Thank you.
Mayor, sorry, can I make one quick?
Go ahead.
Yes? Oh, sorry, just real quick. I just want to wish my daughter a very happy birthday. She turned eight yesterday. Thank you. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Mayor, if I may, um, with respect to a letter to the board of supervisors, public safety, if you recall, is kind of the top priority on our legislative platform. So we'd be happy to put together a letter if, to go out under the mayor's signature, if that's appropriate.
Yes, definitely. Oh, also that, I think each of us, individual city council member can write a separate letter. More than that, I think any of our residents in our city should probably write a letter to county supervisor. To express their concern about the shortage of deputies. And the more voices there, I think it's more effective. So as all the, all the, our friends, citizens here, residents, neighbors, if you are concerned with the public safety, write a letter to supervisor. And if there is a sample letters and templates there available. So you can contact us and contact the city manager for that. Okay. With that, I will close the today's city meeting, city council meeting at the eight oh seven. Thank you.